...and we invite you to join us in the pleasurable allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes to approve that. We have the claims to be paid, bills to be paid.
Mr. Chair, can I approve all claims presented?
So I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented. All in favor of that claim or that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Claims are paid. And with that, we are ready for Highway Superintendent Scott Ackerson. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning.
Are you still with us?
Yeah, yeah, I'm still here. Okay, the first thing I have, last time I was going to have to sign the closing allowance, but I need to have a clean copy before you sign. So I'm going to have to sign that. The next thing is, I got the acceptance letter for the community crossings.
Oh, we didn't get it. What do you got the what?
The acceptance letter of the.
We got our grant.
And we got it.
Wonderful.
I just want to, he needs a copy of that. There's five of them.
Do you make a motion to sign the closing allowance? New policies?
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for us to endorse the Highway Department closing allowance policy. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Scott has provided us with this letter from the Indiana Department of Transportation. This actually says, "Durway Brown, the Indiana Department of Transportation, has completed the review and selection of projects for funding." This is a grant that we have applied for, I think every time. There have been once we didn't apply for it, but called Community Crossing Matching Grant. And it says that, based on your estimates from project applications, NDOT will be transmitting an award letter in the upcoming weeks. The community crossings matching grant funds, which are administered by NDOT, will be used for up to seventy-five percent of construction. A project will purchase of material. These grant dollars will enable you to build and improve Indiana's infrastructure. And the amount is for nine hundred sixty-four thousand two hundred dollars. Scott, I want to congratulate you on that. You did a great job on doing the application work and getting that all in. And that extra almost million dollars will make all the difference in the world to us.
That was, that was something I was, I was pretty, pretty pleased when I got that because I was, I put a lot of work into that.
You were saying you kind of stepped right into it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I got in there and had to be done like right away. So, and I have the chip and seal map. I completed that.
Okay.
And I have some other stuff in there, like on my stone, all that. Can't do pricing until you get the bids back made first, but everything else is pretty well there.
Now, I'm sure that you don't know about it because it was taken, done during the sort of, I must have an extra one here, this will prevent, keep one. Of our previous engineer. But we voted at least two years ago to do a hard surface chip and seal on a road that's the county line road on the south. And it's a mile and a half of road.
Is that down by the golf course?
No.
Okay.
It's to the east front. It's in between, just south of a mile, there would be Sedia and Geddes. It's out in that area, the more Sedia area. It was an area where there's a lot of truck traffic during, when they were working on the first phase of 26. And also.
On that seven hundred and seventy south down there?
Yeah, is that? It's eight hundred south.
That, that eight hundred that's on there is over there by the golf course. Where it turns gravel down the.
We may have to talk about that section. May have to move that down a little bit because there's one little strip down through there on going clear across the county that's gravel.
Okay.
And a mile and a half, I think. So, we voted on it, we all agreed on it. We gave him that task, it never got done.
Right.
So, I'll get you the coordinates.
Okay, and we can add it to.
Okay.
Yeah, just let me know when it's that.
Well, it probably, since it's gravel now, probably it's a double, double.
And just to go over a little bit, the actual miles is fifty-four point two six. Backed it sealed with a double layer or triple layer. It's a hundred seventeen point five miles. We're going to put down twelve and a quarter miles of millings. Just some gravel stretches we're doing, then we'll put millings on that and triple seal that. And this down here at the bottom is where I had to add instead of doing another piece of paper.
Correct.
That's the south that I have on there. As far as materials goes, we're going to four hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty gallons of wall. Ten thousand five hundred and seventy-five tons of nines and eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty tons of lead. We, we have most of, we have about all the elevens, I think we'll need, we got a whole some more nines. So those numbers out here, the prices, that's if we didn't have anything. So, so there won't be, there won't be that much. We should have most of the stuff that we need, we have, like I said, we got all some nines yet.
Well, have you, you all had a look at the road?
There was one road I, was, we talked about, is it on there?
It's south of Radnor?
Yes.
Yes, it's somewhere here.
South of Radnor?
Yeah, a little stretch from Radnor to three hundred. It's gravel.
East and west?
Uh, north and south.
Oh, just goes down to the first little road about a mile?
Yeah.
They're created two or three times a week because there's so much traffic on it because people who love it down that way and head that down to 26.
That's, that's one of those we'll put millings on and seal, triple seal. But we're going to do Radnor too, so we should do double seal there.
Yeah, that's wonderful. That's, that used to be paved, now it's.
I think I, I think I remember when I first started at this page, I don't.
Kind of the territory, I grew up in out that way, so.
I don't have any more handouts. I know that breaks your heart.
Oh, we appreciate these. You're going to put millings on it, you say?
I'm just going to put millings on it and then triple seal. There should be two layers of nines and then a layer of elevens.
Okay. On that road I talked about, is there a chance to put millings down on it too? So it's just gravel?
I think so, as long as we got enough.
Yeah.
If not, maybe we can put some dust in on it or something, spray it and then put, then seal it with that. If we don't have enough milling. The only other thing I got is, we talked before about the guys wanting some of the vacation back.
Yes.
And I didn't know what, what you guys were, had decided on that.
Well, of course, we haven't talked about it outside of the meeting. And you presented it and we said that we would mull it over in our minds and come up with it. So it's time for us to make a decision on that. I'm ready to hear from either of you guys what, what you think. You know my opinion on it.
Well, after talking to them, trying to get a call around my slack, then I'll talk to them again. I mean, it's a hundred and ten percent against.
Wait, a hundred and ten percent what?
Against.
You are?
No, Erwin is.
Erwin is, yeah, I know.
I'm still, I'm still on the fence. There's some there that needs it. We have one that was close and the other ones are, one quit, came back. I mean, I don't think he deserves it. And we got one that's gone for several years, came back. I mean, where do we draw the line? I, I think we need to change the policy first before we do anything, before we go do anything.
I don't know if the policy needs to change at the first, I did talk to Mr. Earl, what he said. Talked to Dan here, and I think we're, we're going to need a cause of the problem at worst. If there are lots of that. Putting in our policy, definitely create that. We got a policy that's written by an expert in that field. With one knowledge, we're definitely going to be able to handle it. I mean, I just think it's a mistake. I mean, I, the guys who have their service, I understand that, you know. They just want to take this, go through canals there. I don't want to face the consequences of it. I need to turn in contact already, and we've got a phone call that I could.
And, you know, I expressed my opinion last meeting of it. I'm agreeing with you in part on that because, I don't know, I think it was five, weren't there? That, there's a couple of them I didn't, I didn't know if they really could get it or not. See, then we're divided up there again trying to figure out who does and who doesn't.
Correct.
And I just felt like that we've got some really good ones there that came back and that, that we, we're benefiting from that, having that call there, people come back.
That's pretty good.
Yeah. So I was in favor of it, but I, I would entertain a motion from either of you in any direction here. Do you want to make it?
I would like to talk to Earl on Thursday. Please go call me back this week, I voted.
Okay.
So I'm going to make a motion to table it for the next meeting.
Okay.
If you want to, I'll, I'll second that, but that's right, I'm not going to change the one I have. So you're putting pressure on me?
I'm going to.
You, you got the brick on your back, okay. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to table this for, till the next meeting. I would call for a vote on that. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 He's kind of a hard man to get hold of.
Erwin?
He's busy now.
Okay, anything else?
That's fine.
I appreciate it. Thank you for the work you're doing out there.
Thank you.
I've heard a rumor that you're not sure.
Yeah, yeah. We gotta, we gotta find some people somewhere. And the main, it seems like the main reason, most people's reasons, either they can't move up any or they're taking better paying jobs.
They're taking more?
Better paying jobs.
They're paying.
So I, maybe down there this summer, I'd like to discuss maybe some incentives. I don't know, some, try to find something we can do to keep people who want to stay here.
Yeah. What you need to do is sit down with your council rep and see if we can figure our way to get there.
And my, my first thought was, and this is just like open for discussion, but my first thought was like, every ten years you're here, you get a dollar or more an hour or something. I mean, that's just something I was tossing around my head. I'll, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Tim on that. See what he thinks. Like I say, that was just a first thought of something we could do.
I mean, when you can go work for a trucking company for almost eight dollars one hour, it's a no brainer.
Well, that, I mean, they're good, you gotta go through that class now, five thousand dollars to take it. They're coming out looking for twenty-eight, thirty dollars an hour. You know, we're not, we're not getting that, so. I think we need to try to figure out something, you know, more incentives or something, but.
I think it's countywide, to be honest with you.
I was going to say, I know.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
Highlight, and I am not speaking on that.
Well, and I was just doing it because that's where I'm at, but, and I, I agree to be all the way across the board.
Before you sit down, we have a couple of questions over here.
Okay, well, I just wondered what the county match was for the community crossings grant. How much was that?
Like three hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Is it?
I think the same as last year.
Okay.
A little under three thirty-three.
Okay, and, sorry, from what fund will that come?
Yeah, it's something. I have that wrote down here around that. Over at the office. I'll have to probably get that. I think he's got, wrote down over at the office, but.
Okay.
Would you make a note to call her on that, since?
Yeah. Yeah.
You probably need my phone number, don't you?
Yeah.
Uh-uh, yeah.
I need your phone number.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. My simple one, what is involved, what is the grant for this time? What roads are, what to work towards a seventy-five extension with?
No, this is.
To maintain the roads we have.
Well, which I know normally we see a map.
Yeah, we just got it.
Of what, what was planned for community crossings.
Is that what we got today?
Yes.
Okay.
These are the community crossings.
Yep.
The map is just. I can juggle it from the crossing. I was going to do a map, but.
So this one don't have the community zone? Oh, this is just one of the county.
And that's the. Maybe this is three fifty seven, something like that. Brighers Pike, here's one fifty south from Brighers to two hundred east. And then two hundred south and two hundred east up to twenty-nine. That's, that's one, and then we're going to do, comes to Bama Whorshu.
Can you provide us some map at the next meeting so people will know? And we have to have one on file.
So the map we got today is not community crossing?
No, I thought it was. This is what he's doing to the highway department.
Okay, okay, okay.
And then I'll get that other map, yeah. I might even be able to just draw it off one day.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Yeah.
Oops.
Because it won't take me.
Any other questions for Scott?
Okay, thank you.
So ready for County Clerk Sharon Milburn. Good morning, Sharon.
Good morning. Just wanted to give you an update on the attorney fees. They are now complete. There was a resolution with the help of Ted, the attorneys that I hired and the person that actually posted the bond. We came to a resolution that would eliminate any criminal charges being filed against me by releasing the bond to have been on posting party. So we do have a resolution. I gave you a bill of what it ended up costing the county. And again, I apologize for that. Unfortunately, that was my only course of action, given the situation I was put in.
Did our attorneys have you get ahold of this individual? Or did you step out and do it on your own?
No, I didn't. The council attorney, Eric Burns, gave me a list of six attorneys. And I started down the list.
But Ted, was Ted involved in this? Because he's the county attorney.
Correct. Yep, Ted was involved as well.
Does it seem like a lot of money for a misunderstanding between the two officers? Four thousand dollars.
I agree with that. But when the judge ordered me to break the law, that was putting me in jeopardy of being arrested, incarcerated, fined, and barred from ever holding an elected official position again. And as we've previously discussed, I worked with Ted early on. We had five different things that we tried first before we went to hiring an attorney. And the judge would not cooperate, help facilitate any resolution. This was the only course. This was after a lot of trying to get it to work out. This was the end result.
You found you were in the wrong business.
Well, and, and to, to just elaborate on that. Had we not reached an agreement with the posting party, this bill would have been doubled because it would have continued on. It went to the appellate court, the appellate court ruled in my favor. Had we not come up with a resolution, it would have went to the Indiana Supreme Court. And my attorneys are ninety-nine percent positive that it would have, they would have also ruled in my favor. I am saving the taxpayers' money by finding a resolution with the bond posting party to get this matter closed.
How much money do you have in your budget to help pay for the?
None.
Have you been to the council?
I've said I'm in.
Have you been to the council to see where they can pay for it?
That, well, they know about this. I am on the agenda for Thursday.
This one was four hundred dollars.
It was a five hundred dollar cash bond.
Did we work it out from here on forward between the two offices? I don't want to come back six months to the same thing.
Provided the judge follows Indiana code, then it's been resolved. If he orders me to release money illegally again, I will hire an attorney and I will fight again. I'm not going to jeopardize my livelihood.
If this happens again, I'd rather pay the five hundred dollars myself than have the taxpayers pay forty thousand dollars.
Unfortunately, that doesn't comply with Indiana's law. I have to release it according to the law. And the law was it goes back to the person that posted it. She wrote a letter authorizing me to send it to someone else, which, that alleviated the legal responsibility or the legal charges that could have been filed against me.
Okay, but we could, that goes up to five hundred dollars.
I, I hope that this, I, I believe this was probably going to resolve it moving forward.
I think moving forward, we know we can just contact the other person who posted the bond and give a letter and say, hey, you want to release it? And I think that's what covered her. Which, that's what I thought when I was sitting here last time. Why didn't the mother just say, hey, you can have it? Why didn't we just call her?
I didn't say release it to her anyway. She must do it.
But then I would have violated the court order and the judge could have had me arrested for contempt of court. It was very complicated. It was complicated, but it was a simple solution that should have been handled earlier.
Because of original twenty thousand dollars, then jumped another twenty thousand.
I guess my, my problem with it is that we didn't know anything about it, wanted to go home, you know.
It was brought to you prior to hiring the attorney.
Yeah, we didn't know.
Was it early, early on?
I think.
Okay. Okay, oh yeah, the first time he came with me and spoke before to you, that was a few, I mean, he wasn't, I didn't have him retained for very long at that point. And we really truly believed that it would be resolved very quickly. But the judge denied all the orders that we issued. He wouldn't even let us speak before him in court. He denied all of them, forcing us to go to the appellate court.
I know she was in a bind, but I got a lot of people asking me how you can spend this much money without any authorization at all from us or the council. I understand where you was at, but how do we start from here on out?
There, there you go.
Because now, now.
Beth has, has a problem with somebody and she just hires them, I mean, she uses as an example. If she hires an attorney, all of a sudden we've got another forty, sixty thousand dollars that we, just coming at us from nowhere with no account to pay it out of. What are we going to do from this point, or at, right now, at this point? We got, we owe her how much money now?
The whole forty thousand.
We owe the whole forty thousand?
Yes.
Thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty and seventy-eight cents. Come and make a motion, we send it to the council and nothing, decide a replacement. Because they're the ones that are going to have to find the money to pay it anyway.
Yeah.
And those things is we got two attorneys ourselves at the point. Should have handled this.
I was told they couldn't handle it because we're both county employees. Ted was the first person I reached out to. He said he could not advise me. He sent me to Eric. Eric said the same thing. And then Eric gave me a list of the attorneys and I started going down the list. And this was the first law firm that would agree to take the case. Not because of not winning or anything, it just they, they weren't, the other ones weren't available to take any new clients.
I'm going to sit, sit right here, I don't, I don't have a solution. I'm second here, I mean, I was like, I'm on the second of your motion. So I call for a vote. I have a motion and a second to pass this on to the council. I want to let you make your decision. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If you aye.
Aye. I'm still creating, I'm paying, came out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Health Department. Good morning.
Hi. How are you all doing?
Pardon me?
How are you doing?
Oh, we're cheering. Beautiful morning like this, can't hardly help.
So, I had to have the generator worked on because it stopped working. So, my solution was to come up with a contract with them to come here yearly to look at it and make sure it's working properly. It was put in in twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen and it hasn't been worked on since, so.
That money you wanted to set out here, Keith, you know about this?
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
So, they came and fixed it and then he brought me the contract. So I, this money will come out of our funds, so we don't have to ask for any funds from you. It'll come out of our funds. And every year they'll come, we're going to make sure it's working properly. So, I, because the generator is tied into the courthouse and because it's a historical site, I have to make sure it's okay with you to sign the contract.
I missed that last one.
Because this is your building.
Right.
I want to make sure it's okay with you that I signed a contract with them. I got an okay with Emily Becker, so I want to make sure it's okay with you that.
And this was okay with your board?
What? What?
Your board's okay with this?
Yes.
Keith?
Since I hired in, um, no one has really had a chance to go in or have hired a contractor to go in to actually assess. It's all been tied into that backup generator. Um, I know that it had not been serviced since I've been here for over three years. Um, it had ran almost every day consistently, which had been a complaint with this job. So Houston Electric was the first one where she called them in to come in and look at it, they were also the ones that installed it. So what is tied in, what I can tell you now is emergency lighting and the health department refrigerators. That's the only one thing. It's big enough to run a mid-size house business, um, what we utilize in this courthouse. They try to run the whole entire courthouse, because this is thirty kilowatt, two forty volt, three phase. It's, it's a big generator.
I mean, the health department's paying for it, they just don't approve it from the contract. And we just got the one generator or do you two?
No, there's just one.
No, no, this is just make, they'll make sure we got services every year, they come and change the oil and.
Okay, that's what I thought before, there you go.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve this contract, the health department's paying for it out of their budget. It utilizes, we utilize it too, so. That's cheap.
I have a motion and a second for authorization for the health department to enter into this contract. Correct? So then I call for a vote, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
It says customer print. Are you the customer or are we the customer?
Me and Emily, yes.
What was that?
Me and Emily Becker, the health officer, and we'll sign it.
Okay, so we don't have to sign this?
I don't think so.
Well, it should.
Because it's in the courthouse and it does run our emergency lighting. You sign contracts.
Okay, um, how about we send it to our crossfire here a little bit?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Two, Ben?
All right.
I mean, I need.
It should not only be running once a week now instead of every day, correct?
Yeah, um, I was talking to Houston Electric when they were here, it's scheduled now, every Wednesday at one o'clock in the afternoon, it will run. So if after it's in the middle of the day, at the courthouse, I suppose it doesn't interrupt any normal operation.
I haven't just sound like an airplane taking off?
Yeah.
Just in the middle of the day.
Some of us like that noise, you know?
Well, okay.
They told us that they put an exhaust on it, but we have to hire a contractor to come and do that.
Well, it used to be after hours, and I walked out one time, I know.
On our base, and it's not a blowout. Yeah, and it's very loud.
Yeah, it is.
If you'd like us to put a microphone, we can.
And no, no, I mean, I know it's loud. Yeah, people just need to realize it again.
Okay, we have two copies, you own one and you own one, who got it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Mike? There he is.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Uh, hopefully this will be quick so we can, uh, how we're, um, reason I came before you today is about a month ago, everybody came in and gave their wish list for projects with the Romanian ARP money. And I know we were on hold until the bond got signed. My understanding is that the bond got signed, I was wondering if between you guys and the council, if you came up with a date?
You're ready to reach into that pot of gold?
Well, the reason why is because I've talked to my, my vendors, and there are price increases coming up, and one of them has already gone up.
Is that radios?
The radios, so it's gonna change the amount of radios that can be purchased.
What was your request for the radios again, it was a hundred?
Uh, right at two hundred, I believe it was.
You had over, way over what we needed, but then request what we had left, what did we have left?
There was six hundred and seven thousand total. And when I started out, it was over a million to outfit everybody, and then I ended up cutting back. And only doing a portion, it was like two hundred and fifteen thousand.
For the radio, two fifty?
Right. That was just mine, and I know that Manor had a class, the coroner was looking for a morgue. And they were telling the department to sort of scanning, I know it was.
The radio certainly seemed like something we needed, I'm not arguing with them.
The, the three things on mine was the radios, the vest, and the morgue. The morgue, but I think you can use that at first and do the morgue. Because that one, two hundred thousand, didn't get approved.
Yeah.
I think it was two hundred thousand.
Two hundred and forty-one thousand.
Highway was two hundred thousand. Because we cut it back.
But I just, I didn't know if you guys had any idea when you're gonna do it, so I can talk to my vendors to see.
I'm glad you brought it up, because we need to be decided.
To see if I can push, see if I can get them to push off that price increase or go ahead and start looking at.
We need to get the sheriff.
Re-remining, and I know Sheriff, I thought he was gonna be here.
So the answer is that they do not have a date. I don't know that, we don't have a date, or?
Yeah, no. We need to get one, though.
Yes.
But we don't think their decision how we're gonna spend it, we just get them over to spend it on it next year. Wait to check, or I have to pay the bills. Here's their decision, what we spend it on.
Right.
And we've had them okay the last ones. So, I believe. I don't, it's been so long since we've done this, I don't know.
Look, yeah. I, I, I know the records in the courthouse need to get done. I think that's a high priority too, but the safety of our emergency services is a top priority.
I didn't see any requests came into us that I thought was, uh, a little.
Correct, yeah. They, they all had good requests. Really comes to us to make the decision on how we want to do it. So my first one is the radios and the vest. What we can do out of head of funds?
Right, you will have that, and council are pretty good.
Right. Sure, we need to get a, a new estimate again, to get that so we can get it ready to go, because I'm pretty sure that price has probably went up.
One vest?
Yeah, oh, no, a long board. But that's, I know that's a different subject too, but she was asking about, I think your last bid was one one sixty-five?
One sixty-seven, I think.
One hundred and seventy-seven.
Wasn't it?
Is it behind the back parking lot?
Yeah.
On the gravel, anyway?
Is it not attached to the building?
No, it'll be completed, so I heard.
It's a central location, isn't it?
Okay, well, so what decision are we making for Mike today?
It was just an inquiry, just what I know where it is.
But since the prices are going up, I'd, I'd like to see you get the radios. It's gonna help out the whole county. You don't have to hold your hand, your hand, a piece of aluminum foil to get service.
Which is about the way it is now.
Yeah, and my understanding of these new radios are pretty good. And we have to update the council anyway, and that's part of it, right? Get a new base radio in the councils with this?
So.
Or this is the handheld?
No, these are handhelds and some of the mobiles. And Congress, there's some mobiles, let's see, the best way to explain this. The mobiles that are in the majority of the sheriff's vehicles right now are outdated. So what we're gonna do is purchase some to start bringing them up, and then as he purchases new vehicles, he's gonna have to add radios to them. Just because they are getting so old that they don't even make spare parts for them. Like he had a mic, uh, no longer functioning in one of the mobile radios.
And you were.
I don't have, it's impossible to find a mic.
But how we do the nine-one-one and keep them going with these radios?
They, they just got updated.
So they're compatible with these?
They're still compatible.
Okay.
And that, the only problem they ran into is that the maintenance contract was denied with the council. And Motorola didn't have to honor any upgrades. That would have been a part of that. When we asked for the maintenance contract, I mean, Cassie was the director when we got the upgrade for the council.
They denied it.
They denied the maintenance contract because they said it was like a warranty. And we don't buy warranties. And those maintenance contracts do all the upgrades.
And tonight's thing to say.
It's known.
Can you, I think we can, I, I'm gonna make a motion for Mike Williams to give you radios, because to me that's a priority. If they're gonna keep going up, it's gonna cost more and more, and probably go up three or four percent, which is.
I would move it was going up four percent, and Ken Woods went up four as well. I haven't heard from Martin.
Will still honor your bid?
Kenwood will, I gotta, I'm, I'm working on Motorola.
Which one would you prefer?
There's, I'm having a discussion with the fire departments and law enforcement tomorrow night.
So if we can give him, if you guys agree to give him the go-ahead, then he can go ahead and say, hey, we can lock his pricing.
That's the only thing I'm, if I do that and I order these and the council turns it down.
Yeah, I think you need to guarantee away the council, because I know that, I'm gonna ask Doug a question. Didn't we bring your request before the council also?
Yeah.
Yes. Because you've agreed on certain ones that have not been approved by the council yet.
What's important?
Um, like some of the scans, not mine, but like the recorder, I believe. I can't remember.
Well, we could.
I should drop my folder.
We can look.
We do, we do a lot of things as far as we just, we pass it and send it to them.
Right. Under the commissary's recommend buying new radios.
Yeah.
So I'll make that motion, send it to the council to buy the radios. With those.
There's two sons, isn't it?
And they need, well, this week? So we, we still get a good timeline? By what?
The Arthur request.
I couldn't find it.
I, I think rounding the data, it was two hundred and sixteen thousand, it was two fifteen sixty thousand.
That's just radio?
That was just radio. And that would cover.
Almost everybody, right? Pretty much?
Right. It, it was to get the fire department started based off of the investment that they already started. It helped them out, and they were, they, when Doolam was here, he talked about another hundred thousand dollar investment from the fire department's. So it'd get them on a, a good roll.
Okay, so you made a motion. Are you willing to second it or not?
I'd say eight thousand dollars for what was happening, increases, what they're.
Yeah, for the increase.
I'm gonna second it. So I have a motion and a second to approve the spending of the two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars on radios pending council approval. All right? Is that all right?
Yep.
All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that back up.
I know that's a, we need to maybe set a time with the council next month. For, there's only been, there are.